Hello, everyone. If we may, let's take a moment of reflection and silence, please. All righty, thank you very much. And we'll officially call the meeting to order and welcome all of you for being here. And let's stand, pledge allegiance to the flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's look at number four on the agenda. And those of you that may or may not be aware, to my left rear corner is the information in regards to the paperwork for tonight's meeting. And help yourself back there. But we will now go forth with number four, consideration of approving the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to re- remove items thirteen and fourteen from the agenda, please.
And approve of the amended agenda?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed say no, unanimous. Number five, approval of minutes for August the fifteenth. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the August fifteenth meeting.
All righty, motion to approve the minutes for August the fifteenth. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Judge seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
She unanimous, we approved. Number six, public comments. And I would say to you, we have five people that have signed up. If you have signed up to speak in regards to either one of the two items that have been removed from the agenda, then you will not be able to speak because that item is no longer on the agenda. Rick Parfus, ADA project. Give us your name and address, please, sir, for the record.
Yes, sir. Rick Parfus, One Morning Tarpon Drive. Good evening, everybody. Boy, I know this ADA stuff has been a challenge for you guys and I appreciate the work to get that done. I wanted to make a recommendation with regards to funding tonight's request, and I'll tell you why I'm making it. I suggested to scrub the budget and see if there might be some money in the budget currently that could be applied to this 261K. And the reason I mention this is I looked at the, you know, the budget report ending thirty September, and it looks like there's been some opportunities there. Now, Brian, don't come over here and kill me, all right, because I wanted to talk about Block Q. Just, you know, you and I go round and round on Block Q and Pier. In talking with Christie, my understanding is if we get the grant, our match is going to be $140,000. I believe that's correct.
I don't have that. It's in front of me right now.
Okay. And this was in an email, and I looked at it earlier today, so if I may speak, forgive me. But we have 300K in the budget right now, so I would suggest something like that. You look at, say, maybe taking 100K of that, putting it against the ADA, that'll still leave you 10% contingency on the project, assuming we get the grant. Now, if you don't get the grant, or you don't give as much, well, then you can go in and appropriate the money you need. If you don't get any grant, you're going to have to go re-appropriate anyway, because the 300K won't cover the 261. Other candidates I noted was debris removal, and I'm not going to say I know all about that, but we're almost through hurricane season, so maybe we could take some money out of debris removal. There's 105K available, maybe you can take up 50 there. There's also something going on with Rothschild and Davis Park. Again, I don't know what that work is, but maybe you could take a little money there and do one of them or half of the work, whatever, just as a consideration. Just, the whole goal here is try to minimize or avoid dipping into our fund balances. We've already appropriated 10% of B Park this year to make the budget. If we take all 261, that'll be another 5%. Last on that, in looking at the plans, I didn't see how people were going to get into the restrooms, and maybe it was in some notes, or I just missed it. Do the plans currently address whether or not we're going to have a ramp getting into these things and the utilities that will need to be connected to these restrooms? In other words, this 261K, is that going to get the whole thing funded, or are we going to be looking at for more money for ramps and utilities? So that's my question, and you guys can figure that down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Surprise?
Good evening.
It is.
Maria Surprise, 1-5-9, OBE, and I'm here to talk about item 10, the 261,753 budget amendment. Just want to say a few things. In my experience with budgets, both professionally and with governing boards, it's usually very difficult to get additional money approved after the annual budget's been set. And I feel like this amendment is a significant increase over the already $1.2 million of the spending that we're doing in sheer from our savings. In my experience also, not necessarily knowing the entire cost of a project isn't necessarily a valid reason for adding money without first, to Rick's point earlier, without first looking at other items in the budget that could potentially be reduced or deferred. As a resident and taxpayer, I have some concerns about fiscal responsibility, as well as the rate at which the town is depleting our savings, which we might very well need in the future for an unexpected emergency or for beach nourishment. Thank you.
Mrs. Page, you were going to talk about parking, I'm sorry. But since it's not an item on the agenda.
You can still come and talk about it, on an agenda item, if there's something different.
Wait, you can talk later in the meeting. Tom Myers. Item number 10. ADA.
Tom Myers, 301 Ocean Boulevard. I'll be the third one talking about this, so I'll kind of repeat what Rick and Maria have said. But it is a budget amendment to take an additional $261,753 out of our savings in the B Park Fund. And as Rick said, in addition to the money that's already being appropriated, we'll draw down B Park by 15%. And at that rate, we'll fully deplete it in less than seven years. So as you know, and I think was also stated, that we're also, you know, already spending down $1.27 million from our overall savings, so this will be another 20% more from our savings that will be taken. So the agreement, the ADA arbitration agreement that forced us to do this work, that was signed in April. So I am a little disappointed that we didn't actually plan for this expense in the current budget. While you may not know exactly how much it was involved in April, a good estimate could have been developed before the budget was adopted in June. And likewise, I'm also disappointed that we're choosing to dip into our savings rather than reducing or preferring other expenses that are in the budget. Using savings to cover these project overruns and unexpected expenses is just not sustainable. Eventually, we use up all our fund balances, and we're saving this money for beach nourishment and other real true rainy day purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bauer?
Everything that I wanted to say has been better covered previously.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment. Number seven, Fran Way. Thank you for the good job you do for the town, sir.
Thank you. It does look really good out there. Hi, my name is Brian Way. I'm a coastal engineer with ATM in North Carolina. We've been working with the town on their beach management plans for, you know, here about, for about 20 years now. And it is, you know, as, you know, as Mayor was saying, the beach looks really good right now. And the program has been great, and there's kind of been a cumulative benefit of the 2017 nourishment and now the 2022 nourishment. And we'll just get into the annual monitoring that we're doing. Annual monitoring analysis. We do volume change, we do shoreline change, and we basically, you know, this has been occurring since about 2001. One of the main reasons for this is the nourishment planning and FEMA eligibility. Obviously, FEMA has helped out tremendously, you know, their cost share of the last project and the last two, the last project, and then even the previous project from Hurricane Matthew. FEMA has really been, that federal funding has really helped us out. And then just some images in the lower right of what, and this was particularly on the east end. And these are from the east end of Holden Beach in the eighties and nineties even, where there were structures out on the beach, there were just bulkheads on the, yeah, structures and houses had to be removed. And this was, you know, up to the nineties where, you know, there were about 40 homes that were moved, taken off the beach in the nineties. So it's not that long ago that the town was having some pretty serious issues with beach erosion. So this monitoring event is really going from summer to summer. We're not really going to cover, and that's with our survey data, and we do that for FEMA timing and things like that. But basically, the annual, this annual monitoring covers what Ian did last summer and late, well, late last, early fall. And as you can see, Ian was not a huge storm, but it hit at pretty much a king tide, and it was about four feet of storm surge above that. So it was a bad storm for only being, you know, two or a couple at the time, but a very bad storm. Anytime you get a storm with four feet of surge hitting at high tide, it's bad. And the town did have some issues, but the beach really held up. And we look at, you know, the volume change, including factoring in Hurricane Ian, and the beach did really well. Then this just kind of recaps, this is about a year and a half after the last major nourishment. I'm sure a lot of people remember this. It happened from January to April of 2022, about a year and a half ago. So we are, you know, this is a good time for, you know, where the beach should look good, and so it does, and so we're happy about that. And then you can see the bar area one, kind of off of, you know, two to three miles offshore. And the bar area one is, you know, a little bit farther to the east off of the Western Oak Island. And then we have bar area two, which is pretty much just, you know, two to three miles offshore, you know, directly off the central reach, project itself. And then these are just photos. I was out there, I was up at the Core 50 Year Project meeting last September, I mean, just last month, participating in that with the Army Corps of Engineers and the 50 Year Project, and really trying to transfer our knowledge to them on this beach and on the offshore and everything. And the beach was great, the dune system looks really good, you know, where the sea oats are kind of flowering and seeding, and it really kind of gets, you can see why they get their name, oats, sea oats. And then you've got the mature ones in the back, and then you have the ones that were just planted, you know, about a year and a half ago following the nourishment. And they're really establishing well. And so the town's, you know, springing, you know, grass springing, the program has been great, and it's very successful. Sand fencing is good, too. You do have to note that KAMA staff are more and more restrictive on sand fencing, where you can put them and when you can't. And we have to pretty much coordinate with KAMA staff whenever we want to put sand fencing out there, so it does seem like it should be easier, and we do know, the town does know what they're doing. But at the same time, you know, something helped happen somewhere else in the state, and they cracked down on everybody. So our volume analysis, we do the volume analysis in three different ways. We do kind of the zero to five, you know, that's not.
Is there any way you can turn this monitor on?
Oh, it was on, so maybe not today, we'll see. It was on before.
So, you know, we do it three ways, and it's pretty much, yeah, sure. From the dune down to about negative five feet of water, then we go from the dune to negative 12 feet of water, and that's, you know, you know, about almost 1,500 feet offshore. And then we really look out all the way, it's usually a quarter mile to a half a mile offshore. And that is kind of our, that's where sand moves. So obviously, you know, for the older people, they're really just concerned with kind of what's happening up there. But what happens out here in the deeper water, in, you know, five to 12 feet of water, is still really important and really helps kind of break down those waves before they can get to the beach and do any damage. So we're going to be concentrating on the volume caps from zero to negative 12 feet. This is just another thing about the cumulative effect of the 2017 and 2022 nourishments. This line right here is pre, this is basically right after Matthew. And you can see here the 2017 nourishment, what material is still there, and then we put more material on top of it for 2022. And so, you know, this is, you know, from about 400 feet to about 600 feet, about 200 feet of more beach. And then, you know, you can see on the sides, you can see, you know, five to 10 feet more of beach, and this is right near the pier. And this is kind of, the beach is really kind of just loving the last nourishment and the cumulative benefits of the nourishment program in general. This year, we're going, we have the beach fill equilibration. And beach fill equilibration is basically just a natural redistribution of sand, but still staying in the system. When the dredgers go out there and build it, and the way we pay them and everything, they construct, you know, they construct the beach, and it's not, it's not as natural, you know, Mother Nature's going to kind of move the sand around, and we know that's going to happen. So we usually build up the big dry beach, and we know that some of it's going to go into the near shore. And that's pretty much what we saw this year, and this is the beach fill equilibration that we're expecting. And it's just a natural redistribution of sand, but that sand is still in the system and benefiting the beach. And you can see basically here in general, the last, the big takeaway numbers, the beach lost 80,000 cubic yards of material last year, and that's really good. Usually, the beach loses maybe between 100, up to maybe 150,000 cubic yards a year, maybe twice that. And then, and that's not including any major storms. But, you know, you do see, we do see a lot of material moving from the upper beach into that, you know, the five to 12 foot deck. So it is moving from the upper beach to the near shore, but it's still in the beach and still a very healthy beach. And then you can see here, when we do our volume analysis, where we put the sand, it's eroding. And that's when you do put a big beach nourishment out there, you know that that sand is going to erode a little faster than normal. And then you can see that the downriver benefits of the whole, on the west end, and that material is spreading to the west end, and that's more than that set of transport direction is. So, you know, it's working as intended. When this material, we put this material here and travels west. And so the beach did great, and then even all these areas right here, you have the ones where we put sand, those were erosional, but out here in the west area, it was, you know, there was a gain, there were gains. Besides just volume and looking at the volume, we just look at, you know, the mean high waterline, MHW. And again, that's the same thing happened, and we know that was going to happen, where the mean high water, the line, eroded here on the, where we put the sand and the nourishment. But actually, we're seeing some gains here on the west end, which is good. And then there's always a few strange things going on at the very end of the inlets, and we just keep an eye on that. But usually, you know, the inlets are the most dynamic part of the beach, and we keep an eye, a close eye on those. But again, you know, this is just kind of as expected, and it's, you know, a year and a half after a major nourishment. From 2000 to 2023, the beach is much healthier than it was back then. And then if you even go back and look at aerials from like 1998, it's pretty astounding, especially on the east end, where you see on the east end, the mean high waterline is 400 feet seaward of where it was back then. And the inlets, especially where we're not doing so great, and then as you can, from those photos from the nineties and eighties that I showed earlier. But basically, all the shoreline is, you know, 174, 216 feet, 157, 85 feet. The shoreline is, you know, much healthier, much wider than it was, you know, 23 years ago. Another item that we did, and I know David and Christie have probably kept the board up to date on this, was the Laco-Foley Inlet Ebb Shoal Emergency Dredging here back in May and June, where the specialized, the North Carolina Specialized Dredger, that is a split hull hopper dredge, it opens up like that, to release, and it also can side cast. That was, Dave and Christie and the town got, you know, organized this, and I helped with the permitting and then just kind of coordination with the contractor. But basically, you know, the Laco-Foley inlet, the channel does kind of, the alignment does change where they follow quote unquote deep water. This one went straight out, and, you know, it was a good, you know, it's a good thing to do. And then the near shore disposal area was right off of Holden Beach, and they put about 60,000 cubic yards in that near shore. And it's in, they put it in about 10 to 15 feet of water. And if you recall, when I said before, that is within kind of the sand system of Holden Beach. So that material is like, it's benefiting the shoreline. 60,000 cubic yards is tough to really notice any difference, and we will try to monitor it. But, you know, it's a good use, beneficial use of that dredge material, and it's a great thing to reestablish that safe navigation through that inlet. Then I think just to wrap it up, the town's working on plenty of things, the Core 50 Year Study. FEMA coordination, we don't have any right now, but that's pretty much, you know, we stay in touch with some of FEMA staff all the time. Laco-Foley Inlet Crossing in Bend Water, there is a project which will put sand on the east end this winter, and that's sponsored by the Army Corps of Engineers, so that's additional sand. Then obviously, the town, now that the town has used the Miss Cady to dredge, if the Core can't do it, the town does have other ways to make sure that that navigation through that inlet is safe or safer. And then west end analysis, that's related to the Ocean Isle Turn with Roine and that bar area in Shalote, and we're kind of keeping an eye on it. The west end, it has been stable, and the dune system is, you know, up to 600 feet wide on the west end, so it's a nice healthy dune system. Sometimes you can get some scarping, and I even saw some scarping out there along the entire beach, but then that's more of a low tide scarp, and it's just temporary and natural. And then offshore bar area finalization. We are, again, we're working with the town to have one more offshore bar area permitted and ready in case another major storm does come through and FEMA comes through. So the town will be ready. And this is, you know, assuming that that Core 50 Year Study does take a few more years, which it probably will. So the town will have kind of permit in hand, and if any kind of major storm did come through, the town would be ready to, you know, do all the FEMA coordination and mitigate that sand. And that is my report.
Any questions from the commissioners?
My friend, my only question is, you mentioned in the term of growing at the end of Ocean Isle Beach, is that, that has not had no effect on our end of the beach at all, the west end?
I guess that they, they're, they owe us a monitoring report, and I have not seen it, but as far as I know, it was not that. Now, they are digging a big hole in Shalote, and that's almost the one that, and if you, where they're taking about 600,000 cubic yards of material out of Shalote and putting that on Ocean Isle. And that can also kind of affect the shoreline. So we're not just looking at the terminal groin, but we're looking at that bar area, the use of that bar area to make sure that it's not affecting the west end. And as soon as I get that report and look at it, I will, I'll get my analysis to David and Christie.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Dixon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This will be very short. There's really nothing remarkable in our police report. This, we're curbing off the summer, getting into our shoulder season, so we're very excited about that. Reports were down this month, and everything's looking, looking much better on our end. So we're playing catch up, trying to get our training done, caught up on some of that for our in-service training. Two things I wanted to mention is, weekend before last, we had Run HB, and I want to thank the community, citizens, everybody. Traffic was a nightmare, we know it, we appreciate everybody's patience. So everybody that came through traffic was patient with us, we appreciate it, so thank you for that. And then just a reminder that, not this weekend, but next weekend is the Festival by the Sea. So again, there's probably going to be some traffic issues, don't get in a hurry, be patient, we'll work with you, you work with us, we'll get through it. So we're excited about it. I had several meetings with the festival committee. A lot of vendors are going to be here this time of year, it's going to be a really big turnout, so we're looking forward to it. That's what I've got. If you've got questions, comments, or concerns, we'll go through them.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Good job, Chief Dixon.
Thank you very much for all you do, you and your staff. Mr. Evans, Inspections Department.
Is that off, too? It's got the batteries, just try turning it back on.
You want this one?
Hopefully y'all hear me, but I got them under the weather a little bit, so I figured I could need this. I wish you didn't make me scream, you know.
You keep talking.
You want this one?
Does that one work?
Mm-hmm. I think. That one's not working yet.
All right. Anyway. We did, had almost $4 million worth of construction work in value to the town. Normally going 40,000, we're giving low numbers, high revenue, which means that it was up or even construction being done. Active new home permits is 30. Other active permits are 189. Permits issued over 30,000 is 29. Substantial improvements where over $100,000 is spent, there's four of those. Permits issued waiting pickup is 23. Total permits that we issued were 242. Permits in review right now are 10. Permits submitted incomplete were 23. Zone permits issued were 10. KAMA permits issued were four. And of course, permits of our service for inspection was a total of 92. 10 total inspections made were 337. So that's this month's report. We're still busy. It's the best way to put it. Still going on.
Any questions from the commissioners? Anything else, Mr. Evans? Thank you very much for all you do. I know you work seven days a week very much. We're on number 10, Mr. Evans, ADA.
Good evening. We're, this is a three item, agenda item, so for the first two, Tim is going to talk about the site plans that were in your agenda. So for the first two, Tim is going to talk about the site plans that were in your agenda packets, as well as the restroom drawings, and then I will cover the budget amendment.
Okay, um, what we have is, we had the Key Bridge Foundation Agreement, and under that agreement, we've been making progress. There's been a tremendous amount of work done. And in, in that, we had to develop, uh, not only just plans, but we actually had to, uh, reach out for them for, uh, to make sure they had, they were ADA compliant, as well as try to cover some of the town's, uh, required facilities. Now, they, that some of these things act as both, but for the, for the interest of time, the ADA stuff is probably the most important part of it. And what you're looking at here is Avenue E, um, and what it could tell is a four-foot wide walkway, which will be ADA compliant. Walkway will be five foot wide, and of course, we will have the emergency egress for the, uh, egress and ingress on the beach, uh, access for the town's vehicles and for emergency services. Uh, we got this permit approved with pervious concrete, uh, everywhere up to the sixty-foot vegetation line, which was not an easy task through CAMA, but we did get it after several tries. And it gives us the ability to meet those requirements that we have to meet under the Key Bridge Foundation Agreement. Now, the only thing on there that is not, uh, indicative of what's actually going to happen is, is that there are what looks to be, or we marked as golf cart parking, and it was on the original site plan that we sent for CAMA, but it was actually, we revised that, we have enough room that those are also going to be, and I don't know exactly the number, but they will be turned into ADA compliant parking spaces as well. So everything that has pervious concrete, which is where the little dots are, those areas will be designated for the ADA compliance, along with the ramp. Now, we have one bathroom shown on there that meets the configuration of a single bathroom design that we have, but we have the capability of putting two there if we ch- so choose. My recommendation would be for two. Someone asked earlier about how you access bathroom. The bathroom is elevated to the same level as the ramp. They will access bathroom from the ramp. Um, and a little side note is, is that these same bathrooms will be also put either a single or a double at one fourteen OBE. We're still in the process of finishing that one with handrails and a bathroom. And we've got a little bit more tidying up to do, but we're, we're pretty much done with it. For those things. But, uh, this is a well, this is really well, good design. We're lucky to actually be able to get that CAMA permit. Anybody that does CAMA permitting knows that that was a tough sell. There is also going to be a, in the future, we will apply for an amendment to this to have the matting go out a little bit further, and we do have it, part of it, because it does extend to six feet below, beyond now, on that plan beyond the vegetation line out there. So there is some on the end of that as well. It's that access deck matting that we used at one fourteen OBE. So, if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer. Yes, ma'am.
Um, where, does, you know, James Bay, is that, is the bathroom supposed to be on that map? How, what is this going to end up here?
Oh, it's all very dark. We'll get into that when we see the design. But the bottom of this, the, the bottom of this walkway will actually be as low as we can do it. We'd have to do that in order to get handicap, get handicapped individuals to walk through.
So is it going to be the portage on this?
No, no, this will actually be up above, or this is actually the street, and will actually be up above and closer to the dune line, we're going to, it's closer to the dunes than it is between. So we need to get it as high as we can, so it'll be more resilient here in the storm. In other words, by estimation, we think it's going to be about that high ground, and it will be a little bit higher than this.
Just a quick question, I thought it was on the plan that it was supposed to be above the flood elevation? Does it be, or breakaway?
We're trying to get the head of sales, because the bathroom design is actually only to be discussed. But the bathroom design is actually a breakaway design.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we couldn't, maybe it has to be fourteen feet, yeah.
That's why I, I thought it was on another one, after that one.
Yeah. So any other questions? Okay. Do we want to go to the, all right. This one was, is a little tricky. Um, this is eight oh one, the yellow part will be pervious concrete, we got this one, we're blue. And of course, the other part will be a hatter's ground.
Whether we keep it, uh, sand or if we actually put access decking out there, it'll be totally up to the town and how much money we spend. But we really need to have access decking out there for our service in order, and of course, that's what's been approved in order for us to meet that, uh, what's it called?
The agreement, the ADA agreement, Key Bridge, you agree?
So, is it, is, what makes this, this should have been simple, but it's not. What's happened here is over the years, as we've used this, it's actually moved to the left, side of the obives from the road, which means that we now have big fall off, so we've got, not actually put a retaining wall along there, and because it's a steeper incline, we have to deal with stormwater runoff. And so, that's a natural stormwater plan that's only been designed by, by, um, Paco Norton.
The Gill.
The Gill, so she actually designed the, the stormwater for us, and it's already, uh, put down, and we look at, and we call it, and this is down stormwater. The idea is to keep stormwater on site. The idea is to build a, retain a wall on the other side, that, that will hold the dirt up there, so it won't move. But also, we're going to get more resilient against the storm out there, because we're no longer big driving through our dune, except our dune, yeah. We'll actually keep that dune higher for the storm, because we get a breach right here. This should help us be more resilient on top of having people with, hanging any, uh, evenings here across. Anybody got any questions about that one?
Can you very briefly talk about what this Key Bridge Foundation Agreement is? I, I'm just working the document that was given to me, if that isn't, someone else wants to. Op in on the Key Bridge.
It's an agreement between the town and ADA, basically.
And the United States Justice Department?
Sorry? Department, yeah. It's, it's an agreement, a mediated agreement between Town Holden Beach and ADA. As terms we agreed to in a mediation. And there's a list of things that have to be done.
Yeah, let's get a bathroom.
All right, I'm going to let Tim take a break for a minute and give his voice. He can come back to technical questions that you want to ask, but I'll cover an overview of the bathroom, so he can have a minute. Um, so, Tim and I have met several times with David Wood, who is the architect who worked on these plans for us. You'll see that there are two plans in your packet. One is a smaller version, one is a larger version, in case there's an area of one of these two spots or a different town area that we choose that we want to use the design in the future. We went ahead and had him do two different schematics for you to look at. Um, it will have breakaway walls that he covered for you in the discussion. And any technical questions on the designs, then I will now let him answer for you.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could go back to the overall height, I see nine and a half feet. Um, that looks like it's from the floor. So it starts from the top up to your piloting, and then there's no, and you can't, how, how high it goes to be. It looks like that's to the bottom of your roof line, and it looks like that would, I would say, three feet there on top of that. So I'd be interested in, in knowing the actual overall.
We don't, we, we won't know that, uh, until we, until we actually start from grade, because we've got to go up there mid-grade.
Once we get the, uh, the purchase material down, we don't have much to take out. And once we get the purchase material taken out, we have to start from there, we have to keep the one inch level. But the town likes to do better than that. So we like to keep it lower, the, on the, of the total run. So we don't know exactly where it's going to be in older size, other than we're going to try to get it as close to the dune line as we can, so that it's somewhere around fifty percent. And we actually don't know exactly how, how it's going to be, because we don't know where we're going to be starting at, until we start bringing the cost.
But from the ground, you know how high it is.
Well, we kind of do.
The extension of the roof, it looks like.
We don't know how high the roof is going to be, or how high it's going to be off the grade, until we find out what the local homeowners are thinking.
But I understand you don't under, know where we'll ultimately end up, but this height here, you should know that height right now.
Well, it's, 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 it's scaled, one quarter inch of one foot, you can scale it out.
Okay, it's just odd that it's not, that part's not scaled now. I understand what you're saying. Where you're starting is going to.
Yeah.
With total elevation, but I was talking about the elevation of the drawing, of, of unit itself, that's not going to vary.
No.
So it, it looks like about, maybe a F three feet onto the roof?
Well, the, if you, if you, if you do a normal pitch, yeah, you're going to be somewhere around three feet.
Three feet added onto the nine and a half.
Yes.
Um, but it's just the, the structure itself, and then based on the ground's elevation, that'll vary. Because this is important for people that are going to have a, a new bathroom view from their home.
And that, there's quite a few comments on Mr. Bay and Wayne that would be effective if that were. So is he going to discuss further with the questions before you proceed with this?
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if you're saying that.
I mean, I, I don't want to be, be frank, as you're saying anything, but we got, uh, the alternative is double-wide. We have to be this high on ground, we have to have this up top, you know, with the deep立柱. We can't shrink the envelope. And the alternative is portage.
Which is there now?
It's there now, where you got double-wide, extra portage sitting on the end of the street. And this is going to be much more, certainly, completely opposite than portage out there.
Well, I think it's going to be easier for a person in a wheelchair to access that than a portage.
Well, that's, it's actual design is, is based on, if you turn the page, I don't know if the other pages are there. It's actually designed to accommodate handicap individuals.
Right.
Um, and so, in, in order to, you see, it's not going to really squash it, we really don't want to be able to squash it. We can't put it on ground, we're not going to be able to put it directly on the ground. If we put it directly on the ground, we have a varying issue, and we have a CRS issue as well.
And its design was designed to mimic other town structures.
Yeah. But it's going to, the idea is with a roof like this building.
Are these waterless, or are they going to be emergency?
They're ready, the way this, the way this is going to work here, and that's another reason after this somewhat open, is because we have to have a hundred percent shut off with a hundred percent by the end of the bench. The idea is, is the only reason we can have these is because it will become part of the town's operational system like the emergency man. At some point during those levels, one through, visit Mr. Bay, it was the highest levels, where we're in trouble.
It's coming, the hurricane's coming.
Yeah, at that point, in our oper, our, our town's operational system, system, our, our document, it will say somebody's got to go out there, cut off that, that a hundred percent valve, so that nothing happens. And of course, it's designed to break away and leave you. The cost of this is nowhere near as expensive as you can imagine, because it is breakaway wall. It doesn't have to be built to meet a high wind zone or any other standard. You only have to be able to meet a ten or twenty ready on the wall. It's the same thing as the terrible design that you have with the covered over here, the other. The idea is, so, my point being is, is this is not high level construction. Yeah.
Tim, with that, with, with this design, would, I know it's not in the plan for right now, um, would we be able to eventually place outdoor showers there?
Well, the outdoor showers are not.
Or like a rinse-off, yeah.
Outdoor showers are, but we, we actually, I actually did calculate plumbing and electrical for these, and both of them were for outdoor showers. Outdoor showers are not, uh, 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 losing words, like I've lost my voice tonight, we usually have a little sharpening this, but it, it's not as invasive as, you know, we can put them on the ground, work it, we spray it off. But the idea is, you've got a real good idea at one fourteen OBE, because we already know what we're going to be doing there. But the idea is to have it somewhere near this. So if you can access this, it can also access the, the outdoor shaft. Because this has got to have water, outdoor shower have water, the, the facility's a lot closer by. So there's nothing to say that once we look at that diagram, where those parking places were, that I said are not, not, not there permanently, we can actually put it right there. And so, because the water's already there.
Thank.
And electricity has to be there too, because we got to have, we got to have ventilation, we got to have other stuff. We have to make other decisions that go along with that.
Thank.
Do you have any other question? And there, and basically, there's a one design, there's a single, and there's a double design.
I'm just working to the, to the people, the Dunescape residents. Why can't it have a flat roof or a roof with virtually no pitch? On a structure that size, you don't have to worry about wind load or rain load.
Well, I mean, you could do that, but at least one side, it's still going to have some, some odds to it. You know, don't, you might really put high out there as you think, but what they have to do, I think, what they're looking for.
I think that that would be very probably.
I think, I think the issue, why not, you take your head with you, and you, and you see if the need for a permit, your need. But why don't you get out there and show them what you're concerned with? Okay? Right there, it's the first, what's this kind of cost? What's all this ADA cost? What's the dollar expense right now?
That's coming up in the budget amendment next, but I don't know if the commissioners are ready to move past one and two.
Wait, look, I asked you a question, how much is the car?
I have to get direction from the board, I said I'm not sure if they're ready to move past number one and number two, but the budget amendment is next, and we'll cover the cost of it. So I have to get the direction from the board to move forward.
When we leave here tonight, we, we're going to know how much it's going to cost.
We're getting to that.
You got to tell us how much.
Sir, we're getting to that. We're not there yet in the discussion, we're certain, we'll be there shortly.
We haven't been, I'm actually the president of Dunescape, P O I, the board of, 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 so I would voice it, uh, you know, capital in my neighborhood, that we keep that roof line as low as possible and keep it hip. I mean, if we're just looking at this, one of these looks deep to me and one looks hip. We'd want something lower.
Yeah, I would suggest that. Um, the way that the family is set, and that way the house is positioned, everyone has a view within Dunescape. And, and this can affect a number of problems. So I think there needs to be a collaboration with, with the neighborhood. And of course, and of course, you got amazing grace, he's going to be affected.
Well, I mean, I, I think that the, the board in the design, if they want this design, or if they don't want this design, then they're going to go with something else. And they're going to actually, so we can have a draw.
I think there's absolutely collaboration, we need, have to, we need to say, go down to it, it's just, let's, we need to communicate, uh, collaboration, let's, let's move in after action.
I thi, I think I can speak for the town, we certainly don't want to offend anyone or block anyone's views. This ADA stuff we're going through has been a nightmare that we did not anticipate. And we're trying to resolve the matters with ADA and still be in compliance with all the other regulations that we have to deal with. And it's not just what we want, sometimes it's what we can get within the regulations that we have to work with. You know, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't think anybody up here wants to do anything to upset anybody in regards to their view of the ocean. And the further the house is back, I'm sure the attitude, and that is the correct word, the attitude as one looks from their porch to the ocean, the further the house is back, the taller that house, Johnny House or bathroom can be, and not impede your view. So, all that'll be taken into consideration. And I think I can say this to the board, we hear you. And there's nothing to gain from, by anybody up here. And there's nothing to gain from, by anybody up here to do anything that you wouldn't like. So, we're just gonna do the best we can and within the ADA and KMA and all the other regulations we have to deal with.
And, and once again, the design, the design is here to be approved.
Right.
If you don't like the design, if it's not approved, or sent back to the county.
Well, I'm gonna comment on that, that this is a conceptual design and that, um, I would ask the board if, if there's any, uh, inkling on disapproving or sending back, that you approve it as conceptual and delegate it, um, to the staff to work with the architect to amend it to something that's satisfactory.
Can, can I get a consensus from the board to follow what Mr. Hewitt just said, to send it back as a cons- as a concept and bring back later?
Uh, uh, that's not what I intended to say. I'm asking the board to-
I imagine that my ears didn't hear what you said.
I'm asking the board to approve this as a conceptual plan and delegate it to the staff to move forward so that we can make some progress on these obligations that the town has agreed to.
Whatever your commissioners want.
Look, I'm gonna say this. I don't, you know, I don't wanna offend anybody or block anybody's view either, but a bathroom's gonna go on that walkway. If you guys want portages to sit on the ground-
Nobody said that.
That's, I didn't say, you said it. I s- I said if you would want portages to remain down there on the ground, that is an option. This, to me, is a better option. It'll look nice. I think he'll do it architecturally correct. The difference between what you say is a flat, you can't, a flat roof is, is, is a water problem, all right? You can't. I build houses. I mean, you don't, you don't put flat roofs on houses. It has to have some kind of pitch. You're splitting hairs when you're talking about three foot and a foot and a half slope. I mean, you're not, I mean, you're talking about this much. And you're thirty feet in there or whatever back in Doonescape. You've got a house to the side of it that's already gonna be way higher than this. I mean, this is a little, small structure. I think architecturally, it looks good to me and I, I would rather see that ten times over on my island than portages. We don't have an option of not putting bathrooms on that walkway. We absolutely don't have an option.
I, um, I didn't hear anybody say, "Don't put bathrooms there." So, I think you're, you're making a right turn here that we ain't asking them to. Definitely, the bathrooms are coming. The bathrooms are coming. Nobody has said anything like that. I just, I see, if I look at this paper, I see two des- two kinds of designs. I see one that is very hip. I see one that is more hip. I know from a building of our own house, that, that hip roof is better for hurricanes. So, I don't, I, I know we have to adhere to the ADA. I totally get that. But your roof, I don't believe that comes into the factor with the, you have to have certain ceiling height, you have to have a width of the door. Is there any requirement that you have to have a certain width? And I do think that one and a half versus three and a half, it doesn't affect my own view personally, but i- if it did, th- that would matter to me. If I was to have proximity, that too would matter. If, I mean, the town has very strict, uh, rules and regulations as to how high any structure can be. And if it exceeds that even by an inch, the builder has to bring that down under your, 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 your regulations. So, I would just advocate for the minimum, I, I'm not saying flat, that'd be, that'd be silly, but as minimal pitch as possible. And collaborate maybe with the people in that immediate area.
The minimum roof pitch to put signals on, which would be the cheapest construction, is probably around a three twelve pitch, which means three inches every foot. We might get lower the pitch of that roof a foot and it'd still look fine, but, I mean, it has to have, it has to be able to shed water. Um, if we went metal or aluminum or some, something like that, we could probably get it a little bit lower, but, I mean, then it would look like a portage John sitting on a, on the walkway. So, architecturally, if you don't put, if you don't put a little pitch on it, it's not gonna look good at all. It is gonna be a hassle.
The reason this design like this is because all of our facilities are designed like this. The, the lift stations are designed like this to aesthetically fit into the community. The, the picnic area is, is designed like this to aesthetically fit. That's the reason it's something that design, the designer was told to do that. It is designed the same way as our other facilities are designed, so that they fit into the community. So, architectural features are a wonderful thing. Most of you probably don't remember back thirteen years ago when we had all these houses being built with flat roofs that people were doing minimal pitch on, and we had no architectural features. And we came to the board, and you were on it, and when you're on it, where we actually just help elevate the buildings, write new rules so that we can get roof pitches so that we have decent architectural design in our structure. When you ride down the beach now, you can almost tell the difference in the last twelve to thirteen years and now, I'll tell you, in how, how good the homes look based off the fact that you can now get the roof up. But roof height and architectural features is very important. You can build homes that are flat roofed, you can build homes, you can build a roof with a two and one pitch. You're gonna put a whole lot of stuff on that roof that you wouldn't normally have to put on one that has a decent pitch if you wanted to keep them weak, real weak any other way. But I'm not a proponent for what design we use, you know, I mean, but I do believe that, uh, that we would have to have some other guidance, other than the fact that we're doing exactly what we've been doing for the last twelve, thirteen years, including with, with the lift stations.
All right, the town manager has given us a request. What's the, which is-
I'd like to make a motion that we accept these, uh, designs, uh, conditionally that they, that we send it to the staff to make any adjustments we can make to the roof height and still maintain structural integrity.
Second?
I do, yeah.
Discussion?
Can I just ask to clarify, are you saying the site plan designs for both sites and the restrooms in that motion?
Conceptually, yes.
All righty. Motion made, seconded, discussion's been had. All in favor say aye, opposed say no. Unanimous, Mr. Hewitt, you've got your wish.
We need to do the budget amendment.
So, now it's time to talk money.
Yeah.
So, the budget amendment is for two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Of that amount, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars is a combo amount dedicated to this new construction you just conceptionally approved at Avenue E and eight oh one combined. We would not break out those numbers because it would have a chance to undermine the procurement process, meaning if, just as I wouldn't tell Brian how much money I had in my pocket, if I was gonna ask him to build a house for me, we wouldn't tell you how much we anticipate Avenue E to cost versus how much we anticipate eight oh one to cost because that could have a chance to compromise the bid climate for contractors that are gonna bid on this. But the total combined cost estimate for those, one nine eight nine seventy. The, uh, remaining amount are Keybridge specific items that we have already accomplished in this budget year. When we talk about having, uh, supply or costs go up unintended, nobody knew that, for example, aluminum handrails at one location was gonna be twenty thousand dollars. And at the time that this process was started, we did not realize that we were gonna have to have an engineered solution at eight oh one that required not only engineering but a stormwater plan. And that had to get McGill to do a site blend for us, but actually took the cost of that project up about five times. So, those are changes that have happened in the course since we started this. Um, and, and Tim talked about that engineering solution a little bit at eight oh one. Um, not to, I know this question was to the board in the beginning, but to follow up a little bit on your comment, Mr. Parkus. Um, lines like debris removal look really big with a big number sticking in them right now that's not been used. And you do think about hurricanes only, which we can have a hurricane in May, but that line also houses required raking, tilling and rock picking that agencies decide if we have. So, to make you feel a little bit better about it, they don't tell us whether we have to do that about our beach project until the winter, and then we're allowed to do it in the spring.
You just have the suggestion on her to go look, like I said, that nothing applies to including the park. But again, the goal was to minimize cost and leave out this.
Okay. Discussion, anybody or a motion?
Well, again, this is, uh, something that was, uh, was brought to our attention by a local resident and was taken into, uh, given to the Justice Department, and we were mediated with them. And we were told, we agreed to the mediation as to what we would have to do to meet the ADA compliance here at Holden Beach. And being in the transportation industry that involved a lot of ADA transportation, I realize how important that is. Number one, how important it is, but number two, that, you know, that there are very strict rules that must be followed. Uh, we, we have gotten away with not doing this for quite some time. And I think that with what we're doing now, i- is we're, we're doing the right thing that we should have probably done sooner than later. And now we've, we were in a position where we've really got to do it. Uh, I think with the work that these, Tim and, uh, the, the staff has done to get us here, to get the permits and get these designs and to get us, uh, to where we are, we, we've got a timeline. And there's a line in the sand that we've gotta be finished. This isn't nothing that, that we can just say, "Well, we'll put it off till next year." Now, we, we, I, I wish we could. But this is something that, uh, the town, uh, agreed, let us agree to the terms of the mediation. So, it's, uh, you know, it's, no, I don't think this is money being spent frivolously. I think we are being as, as, as concerned as everybody else about the budget and where the money's coming from. Again, hopefully at the end of the year, the, the, some of the things that we had budgeted that maybe aren't gonna happen or are not gonna be able to be completed will give us some, some extra funds at the end of the year. It's not like it's gonna disappear. It'll still be in the, in the town's money. It'll still be in our, whether it be in one account or another. So, it's, uh, again, I, I've got to, I feel like it's important for us to, to, to move on with this. And I, I want to, uh, make a, a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen, amending ordinance twenty-three dash eleven, approving the funds to complete the ADA required improvements.
Judge Second?
Yeah.
Judge Second, any further discussion?
I wanna say a couple of things. A budget, a town budget, anybody's budget, your budget at home, whatever budget you're creating, is a list of numbers, placeholders sometimes. This was not included in the budget at the time that I, best of my recollection, we didn't have a good handle on what it was, it was gonna even entail. We didn't know if we were gonna get a permit for purview's concrete. We didn't know if we were gonna have to change the handrail. We didn't know the specifics. It took time to figure that out. There are placeholders in our current budget, which I agree with Rick, are not gonna be used or won't be used up, that we'll have left over, that we may could defer a project or two to in turn retroactively pay for this. But this ADA is not an option. This, in, in your words, Mr. Myers, is a rainy day. And we have to, we have to spend this money to get these projects done. We, we do not have a choice. And it could be a hurricane, it's a rainy day, but a nice ADA, it's a rainy day. And this town wasn't prepared for the costs and it's, it's, it was just, it dropped in our lap. There was a, um, an agreement that was made and we have to fulfill it. So, we have to, we have to move forward with this.
If I might say, Mr. Mayor, I probably have had more experience in this than anybody in this state. I was, and nobody's ever prepared for it. This is the way it always hits with this ADA things. I think we did a remarkable, and I had nothing to do with it, so those, I think they did a remarkable job in reaching this agreement.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm very impressed with, with the outcome. You know, we are a nation of laws. We follow those laws, those we like as well as those we don't like. And that's where we are. And what these gentlemen have said, it's not like we've got a choice, that we are here thinking, "Well, you know, we'll go spend the town in the bank, Rusty." This is something we have to do. And if anybody can do a reasonable, objectionable, uh, uh, analysis of what was done and not say, "It's not pretty remarkable," if not absolutely remarkable, I'd be surprised. So, I just wanted to be on route to saying that and thanking all of you who had a hand in working it out.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add too, like I said, this is a time, time issue, and the staff has worked tirelessly on this. I'm sure they put in hours over time. But we also keep in mind, we're talking about laws of ADA and everything like that. You have to keep in mind that people that are handicapped should be allowed access to the beach. And we have not been in a position that every access we have has been acceptable for people to get to the beach. Our handicapped parking spaces, if, you, you don't think about it, but on, on Jordan Boulevard, if somebody got out in a wheelchair, they'd roll into the road. So, this is not a law that's really homeless. This is like, this is something we need to do so that everybody has accesses to the beach, not just certain people. So, keep in mind, you know, our hands aren't tied with this per se. They are, but this is something we should do.
I'm gonna, one more thing. First year we moved in to the house that we now live in, that summer, there were three sisters down here. One from Tennessee, one North Carolina, and not forgotten other state. And they had their mother, who was about close to ninety years old. She was in a wheelchair. And she wanted to go out to, to the beach, had been coming to Holden Beach for a long time. She wanted to go out there one more time before she died. And some of the people, we carried the wheelchair out there and set up to put our feet. So, not only do I think we are bound by the law, but I think we are bound by God decency. When you see something like that, it, it touched me.
Yes, sir.
And she died that, that year. So, last time, her sisters brought her down, I thought that was just touching.
Good story. Okay, discussion has been had. Are you ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye, opposed say no. Adam Clerk, and it's unanimous. Ms. Ferguson, you got anything else, or Mr. Evans? All right, we're gonna move to number eleven, Public Works, and somebody told me-
Heather's gonna sub for Chris tonight.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the town is part of a multi-jurisdictional disaster debris-
Heather.
Sorry, I thought I was just loud. The town is part of a multi-jurisdictional disaster debris management contract with Southern Disaster Recovery. And the county recently informed us that the contract does not include the removal of eligible hazardous trees of less than six inches in diameter. So, the proposed amendment just adds that to our agreement, and it's at fifty dollars per tree that's removed. So, staff is asking that the board approve the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Judge Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
So, if, you know, we, we talk about this when we have storms and getting the debris moved away. And if we didn't remove all of it, there would be a lot of backlash. So, with this as a way that we can pre-plan for a rainy day when we need to make sure that all the debris is out of people's yards and out of our streets. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye, opposed say no. Unanimously approved, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on number twelve. That is something I asked to be placed on the agenda. And I would preface what I'm gonna say by simply saying that, uh, I do not request action tonight if it's not the pleasure of the board, but I would like to bring it to the attention of the public and the board and staff. Um, since the town has been a- Since the town has been a town, it was always a concern for many property owners to see trucks, trailers loaded with sand or partially loaded with sand from sites here on the island and to see it going across the bridge to places unknown. Oftentimes, that sand being used as field dirt or whatever on other job sites or other one, other people's yards or whatever. And for many years, myself included, many property owners thought that we had an ordinance in place clearly stating that there was a violation to haul sand off of the island because sand is so precious here. And as I look out in the audience, there are some contractors here that were probably affirmed that depending on the size of the dump truck, a load of sand now will be $300 and more, depending on the number of yards in that, that truck's capable of hauling. So sand is precious, and I have had recently some owners witness swimming pools being dug and other excavation being done on sites and asking me, why do we allow that removal of sand from the island to take place? And so I'm simply saying to the commissioners and staff to look into whatever rules we have, whatever options we may have, in considering some kind of control possibly over this kind of activity. Some of the things that come to mind, we have a lot of low areas on Holden Beach. We have areas that need, need fill. Our construction workers in behalf of the town often need fill material. So I'm simply asking maybe Mr. Hewitt and Ms. Ferguson, maybe you, along with Mr. Evans, to maybe bring back some ideas of storage areas or options that we can better control and benefit from the sand that we have on the island rather than watching some of it be removed. So unless the commissioners want to discuss it further, I would just simply ask for the blessings from the commissioners to request such from the staff and recommendations and results from your review.
David, would it be appropriate to make a motion for the, to instruct the staff to work on a, an ordinance for such?
Sure. The consensus of the board would be fine unless-
Consensus? Does anybody object to that?
No, I just think that we need to come, to direct the staff to form some type of removal ordinance for our beach, that it will not allow sand to be taken off the island and be either put on town property or some other property that keeps the sand on Holden Beach.
Yeah. I was gonna speak to that because I'm a contractor, so I haul sand occasionally. You can't just dump, like if somebody has a low lot or something and they say, hey, dump your extra sand on that, we'll get, Mr. Evans will give us a little red sign for a while.
All right, anyway, consensus is bring us something back, please, sir. All right, let's turn the page and go to number 13, which we removed, number 14, which we removed, and number 15. Ms. Fennel?
In the personnel policy recommendations made by the MAPS group back in 2019, they recommended that any employee with a vacation balance exceeding 30 days at the end of the year shall have the excess accumulation transferred to sick leave so that only a balance of 30 days is carried forward to January 1st. When the board approved the policy in January of 2020, the verbiage was changed to reflect that any employee with a balance exceeding 30 days shall have up to half of the amount accumulated during the year transferred to sick leave, and the remainder shall be removed. The board's objectives this year include an overall review of personnel policies with the intent to propose changes that will improve staff retention and development. Based on the review, staff is requesting that the board amend the personnel policy to reflect MAPS' original recommendation, that any balance exceeding the 30 days at the end of the year be tral, balance be transferred to sick leave. Due to heavy workloads and other circumstances, it's always possible for employees to utilize accumulated leave. Employees should not be penalized and lose their earned leave for contributing to the town's daily operations. Management and department heads will monitor employees to ensure the vacation leave policy is adhered to. So the suggested motion is to adopt the proposed amendment to the town's personnel policy.
Just a, a word of comment on page 35. The, let me get over here in just a second. The third line down near the right end, it's got A-C-C-E-S, sir?
I got you. I got you. I see that.
And I'm sure there's some other stuff in there.
It's a spelling challenge.
The old school teacher in me, I said, oh, my mom would have a heart attack if she saw that.
With that amendment, staff is-
Take the Cs out, put a X in there. All right, what's the players of the board? Discussion, move, or what?
Well, it can, instead of pushing this down the road as such, to putting it, putting it in sick leave or whatever for the, the time that you were cured during the year for your vacation, would it not be better just to go ahead and, and get paid for that vacation in that calendar year? The reason I'm saying that, because if we push it down the road, you know, you say, well, there's no cost to the town, but in my opinion, it will be, it'll be an increased tall cost to the town at a later date.
It won't be. It, it won't be because compensated absences are carried on the balance sheet. They, it includes both vacation and sick, so they've earned it, and regardless of which category it's in, it's the same cost to the town.
This is pretty standard with other towns throughout municipalities in North Carolina. It is what MAPS proposed to do with it. It's just, there was a concern, I guess, when it originally was approved that people wouldn't take vacations. And it's not that we don't want our people to take vacations, it's that we strictly just do not have time to take vacations sometimes. I mean, Tim's here, he's sick right now. It's just, we're a small municipality. I do my job, nobody backfills me. So if I'm not there, there's, there's nobody to help. So this is just to make it so that the people are not penalized for actually staying and doing their job when it needs to be.
Does this cover the whole staff or just?
Whole staff.
It would be for everybody.
You can't do this part, you have to do it all.
Yeah, it's for everybody. The people, we ran the numbers, the people that have not taken all of their vacation time at this point are pretty much the people you're seeing sitting in this room. It's all the department heads. So the other levels-
That's what I was asking.
Yeah. It's the people it's affecting right now are the people who are sitting in this room.
I, I can, I can vouch for one of them. That man right there. I see him over here on Saturdays, after hours. I mean, I come from a world where if my guys work, like, they need to be compensated. They deserve every bit of it. He's here, he's here every day. He's training new inspectors. He's got, he's, he's dealing with ADA, numerous other things. Chris Clemmons, he's another one that comes to mind. I couldn't imagine him being able to say, hey, I'll see you in a couple of weeks. I mean, he's the sewer system of this town.
He's what?
He's the sewer system. He, he keeps everything going. He can't leave. I mean, he's just one of the people you just keep, it's hard.
You need to, you need to look at too, like the police department, Public Works Department. I don't think a police officer can take a vacation at all in the summer, can they? So you think about these people, they have to take their vacations in the fall when it's not, Public Works employees, if you saw them all out doing hurricanes, they're out there in the pumping station trying to keep water out of it. They're all, you know, they can't take a vacation during hurricane season, so you have to look at the, the point that, it's not that they don't want to take a vacation, who don't want to take a vacation, but you can't.
This, I, I want to stress that this is a no cost to the town. It, it will not cost the town anything. It's, other than not taking back something that the employee has already earned.
That was what I was getting at. They earn those vacation days-
That's right.
-that they can't take. It's not fair for us to take that from them. That's my opinion.
I just thought that you needed to be paid for it, in my opinion.
Well, this really is going back to what we used to have. It's not, not something new. This, what, 2020, is that what?
That's the original proposal.
Yeah. What's your pleasure?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt-
Go ahead, Doc.
The attached proposal, amendment to Town's Personnel Policy, Section 8.
All right, made and seconded. More discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye. Favors say no. It's unanimous, and not gonna cost the town any money. All right, uh, public comments. Ms. Pate, did you want to, Mrs. Surprise?
Thanks, I won't take too long. I know that you tabled the discussion for the parking, but based on the discussions I heard tonight with the people from Dunescape, and also I think what, you know, no one's against ADA, and if we're gonna do parking, I think we could learn a lesson, and like, before we make a decision, I would recommend making sure we study the pros and cons, perform a cost-benefit analysis, and we have an opportunity this, this fall potentially to look at how the parking is used in the off-season and use that data to make some decisions going forward. And also, I think that the more we involve the taxpayers and the residents and the people who live here, they want to, you know, we want to do good things for the town. I think we just want to be more involved, and we want to know what's going on, and, and I think people want to give their opinions before decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak about anything you want to speak about? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he was coming up. Yes, sir, come on.
I'll just say it.
You got, no, you gotta speak into the microphone so we can document what's being said at the meeting. Name and address, please.
Sure. Ron Bristol, 157 Ocean Boulevard East. Just, just a question. Can you give an updated status on when the bike lanes are going to be?
I'll do that in my mayor's report.
Okay, thank you.
Or the town manager, he might want to do it before my turn, but one officer, both officers will take care of that. Anyone else want to speak? About anything. Last call. All right, Mr. Hewitt, number 17.
Yes, sir. Wanted to apprise the public and the board that we held bid opening today for the potential pier repair contract. We did not receive any bids today. The architect subsequently is going to jump right on it and re-advertise beginning this weekend. The particulars and the date time certain hasn't been determined yet, and I'll follow up with him tomorrow to see what he's, he's thinking about schedule-wise. Block Q parking improvements, the first phase of that, bid solicitation has been tendered with a pre-construction meeting scheduled for the 23rd of October and bid opening scheduled for the 2nd of November. Phase two, which involves the Kama Access Grant that was submitted to the Division of Coastal Management, that is in, I guess, consideration now. I don't have a timeline on when Kama will be making a decision on that, but that is phase two, and it is not part of the phase one on the parking portion of Block Q. Sewer system lift station improvements, we don't have any news or to pass on as to what EPA is thinking of in terms of our, the review of the EPA grant, work plan that we submitted, but also, we do not have any questions from them as of, which tomorrow will be the end of their 60-day review period since we have submitted it. Unknown also at this time is what impact the looming federal budget impasse, which is only good through the 17th of November, about another month, what effect that's going to have on the EPA's ability to administer a grant. What we're thinking is that there'll be a continuing resolution through the end of the calendar year, but, you know, greater minds than mine have insight as to how the, the Congress is going to work the federal budget. And this is not the anti-report, but neither have we received any information from the state water resources agencies concerning the $2 million appropriation for Holden Beach that was in the most recent state budget that passed. I'm sure that with a $2 billion, with a B, almost $2 billion appropriation for water and sewer across the state, that they're having to come to grips with just how do we administer the, the project? But we, we will be in touch with our legislators to see if they can perhaps shed some light for us on how that's going to work out. Until we have some clarity on both of those and we receive our final audit for the year, I'd be, I'm loathe to forecast when we will be able to award a contract for those sewer lift station improvements, but it's a lot better problem to have is to have both of those grants pending than not to have them pending. Ocean Boulevard resurfacing and bike lane project, well, that's probably good news, but there's probably just as many unknowns in that equation as all of the above. We do know who the paving contractor's gonna be. It's Highland Paving who has done work here on the, on town projects before, and I understand that they have another portion of local work here that's coming from Shiloh down 130 on resurfacing. So we've met, town staff met with Highland Paving last week. Some of the takeaways as far as specifics that we could ascertain from that dialogue, they're gonna start, the surveying has been accomplished, but the stormwater, which they're going to start on beginning of November, is gonna hopscotch all around. So they're gonna have to take care of the stormwater, the small stormwater pocket issues before they begin tearing up in earnest. After those stormwater solutions are made, whatever they, they become, the paving prep work will start. That's going to involve the removal of the, the road shoulders, and we are thinking that this will be in the December timeframe. So there's at least three feet on the north side of the road and seven feet on the south side of the road from the west end gate up here to about the middle of the 100 block east. That's, uh, from memory, and I have the designs on the endpoints there. So the point that I'm trying to make with y'all, and this is the feedback from DOT, is that even though that we're not gonna be able to know exactly what point in time that he's gonna be in front of your house, what we do know is that if you've got any pretty rock or material that you've really got a crush on, you need, and you don't want it hauled off to somewhere else, you need to be, you're going to be responsible for keeping it on your property. What do you mean by that, Dave? You're gonna have to get out there and either get somebody, or you're gonna have to rake it back onto your property so that the contractor doesn't take it away? Because they're, they're gonna, they're gonna cut the side of the road three feet wide on the north side and seven feet wide on the south side, and I don't know what we're gonna do with that. But what we do know is that what will go back into those cuts is gonna be generic AB- is going to be generic ABC stone. So do not think that because you've got pretty shell or, or coquina that you're going to have a customized fit. DOT is going to do a mighty fine job at giving you the DOT standard. And most likely, that's going to be 57 ABC stone. And everybody gets the same one, just like a Model T. You can have exactly what you want, except it's going to be black. One of the more important things is that they're also going to take care of your mailbox for you. Okay? They're, they're going to tend to it. And whatever you've got your mailbox sitting, sitting on, they will attempt to remove it, lay it down, do whatever they have to do and reset it. If it falls apart, you're going to get a special DOT approved type mailbox to reset, set that. They will not go to the driftwood store up there and get a piece of driftwood that, to make it look like what you had there before. And I'm, I'm really trying not to be facetious with this report, but this is exactly the type of information that we got from them. I will go ahead and forecast that, that the, the tearing up of the shoulders of the road is going to take place December, January, and February. And that actual paving is not going to start until it gets a little bit warmer in the spring, March, April timeframe, which will begin on the west end. They'll, they'll go to the farthest reach so that they can work back shorter and shorter. You don't want to drive over newly, newly laid asphalt. With completion still being touted as Memorial Day. Lastly, uh, oh, not lastly, but got two subjects on dredging in Harbor Acres. We're setting up for a winter dredges, uh, a winter dredging of selected areas in Harbor Acres. There's some high spots in there that have to be tended to. Our project consultant engineers is, is currently developing designs and specs and a cost estimate, um, which is going to be important because we believe that we're going to be coming to the board next month with a North Carolina Division of Water Resources grant applications that'll help offset the cost of that project. And that's 75%, isn't it, Kristy? Um, this project is not going to be as big as some of the other ones on the canal dredging projects simply because it's just the Harbor Acres and it's not a large-scale dredging project. To the Lockwood Folly inlet crossing and Ben Widener dredging project, Fran alluded to it. Uh, the Corps has let that contract for that, that winter event. We don't know exactly what timeframe it is, but the important piece is that it's going to place about 140,000 cubic yards on the east end. And normally, that box starts, um, about there at Amazing Grace and comes back this way up to 2,000 meters, 2,000 feet, excuse me. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight.
Commissioners, got any questions of Mr. Hewitt? All right, mayor's comments, hurricane season. We have passed October the 15th. And I always say, if there's not one on the way, that we've made it another year. So I feel comfortable in saying that we have. I remind everybody about meet the candidates night, 6 o'clock Friday at the Holden Beach Chapel. Huh?
Is it 6?
It is 6 o'clock in.
5:30 in.
5:30, you can go over and chit chat with whoever you want to chit chat with, but the official meeting starts at 6.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I hope the answer was given by Mr. Hewitt in a very thorough way in regards to the paving and the bike path. Look at that, okay. Um, the question has been asked of me in regards, I've had two people on Greensboro Street and, and some of the other streets in the area about the access to the ocean. Their opposite Greensboro Street, that Mr. Bass allowed the town to use. That agreement has been extended, uh, to help the town, even though the ownership has changed. Uh, that agreement has been extended to allow the access to be open and used as it was before the campground was sold. So, um, that's up to the town and the owner to work out when that concludes. But right now, there are no plans to, uh, close it off. So those of you in Greensboro Street area, uh, continue to use that as you have in the past. The Holden Beach Causeway, Mr. Hewitt alluded to it a little bit. Uh, I was at a meeting Monday with DOT and, uh, the improvements to the Causeway are still moving forward in the planning stages. Uh, but it's got a long ways to go. But it is still in the hopper, so to speak, to, to be done. And, uh, that's a interesting conversation. And it's a, it's a real problem in the fact that those people that own individual lots versus those that have big properties, those individuals that have the small lots under the county regulations. And remember, when you cross the bridge, you're entering Brunswick County and you're leaving Holden Beach. So the rules and regulations that Brunswick County has for those small lot owners over there, I don't know what they're going to do with their property. Because in, like, between the parking requirements, the setbacks, lot coverage and all that, that's something that's going to have to be dealt with. It's going to be a lot of heartache and head scratching by a lot of people. But it is on the way to something being done over there. Uh, remind everybody about voting November the 7th. Listen to your candidates Friday night at 6 o'clock or anywhere along the way. You can bend the ear and make a decision that you think's best for Holden Beach. A lot of good people running it. I'm sure that the citizenry will make the right decision and, uh, it'll be over soon. So, uh, that concludes my report. And Mr. Smith, unless somebody's got some questions. Mr. Smith, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, I want to, first of all, thank everybody for coming this evening and listening in online. It's always nice to, to see a, a good group of people here. We've had a lot of meetings in my three years here where there's just been the staff and us. And then sometimes that is a little concerning. And that brings me to the next thing is, uh, I really wish there was some way that we could have an open forum with our citizens more often, set up something where we could talk to them. However, all of our email addresses and telephone numbers are online. If, the emails that I get, I answer them. I try my best to look at them and the, the comments that are sent in before our meetings, I always take those into consideration. So if it was just, I, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, or like what I like to call recycled information. And it would be nice to have our citizens know what the facts really are. It's hard sometimes for them to sit down and listen to a recording of our meetings. And, uh, sometimes it's hard to hear. I've, you know, I've, I understand. I have a hearing, a problem myself. But it's, uh, it's something that I think that as we get into this season here, you need to realize how proud I am of the commissioners that I've had up here with me. Uh, I, I think we've done some really great things. Uh, we've lost one, uh, passed away. We, we lost one that had moved away. Uh, but, but the Corps and the people that we've brought on board, I think we have, we have done our best to move Holden Beach forward. We want it to continue to be a tourist attraction in the state of North Carolina. And to do that, you've got to accommodate the people that own that beach out there. We own the property next to it, but they, you know, the beach out there is for everybody. We need to make sure that, but in staying there, we still need to look after the, the property owners first. They are the first consideration. One of my mentors gave me a list when I got elected. And he told me, made little bullet points of to what I needed to look after. And the, the citizens of Holden Beach was on there three different times. And so he made sure that point was, was well driven home. It's nice to see Holden Beach calm down after a busy winter, I mean, a busy summer. I'm looking forward to the cooler weather, the, the police department, our town staff, the, everything, the concerts, all the stuff that we did this summer. Made, uh, had a lot of people working overtime. The building, I would have thought with the rates of interest would have slowed down, but evidently people still got a lot of money. So we're still seeing that moving forward. So, uh, it's good to see it slow down. It's nice to walk out on the beach in the mornings and really not see anybody until later in the day. That's, uh, that's the, the beauty of this place. Again, uh, I, I hope that everybody will get out and vote. I hope that our, the meeting we have, uh, or they, they have scheduled for Friday night is informative. And I, and I hope that everybody will sit back and, and, and think about what's said and think about it if it is in the best interest for the future of Holden Beach. And that's why it's tough for us to sit up here sometime because we're, we're, I feel like we're playing with the future. And, uh, we are dealing with our citizens' funds. And I think we have, we really try to do a good job to do what's best for the town of Holden Beach. And I appreciate all the support we get from our citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Murdock?
I also want to thank everybody for coming out. I want to thank everybody for the support, um, that you give this board up here and for the work that we do, the town staff. I commend you on your efforts on everything. I see people going overboard, above and beyond their duties all the time. And, uh, working really hard to keep this town alive. And, uh, apologize for missing the last couple of meetings. I, uh, had a little bout myself. And I tell you, when you go through something like that, you realize that every little issue is not as important as you thought every little issue is at the time. And my mom always says every morning to make it a good day. So when you get up tomorrow, make it a good day. Make it the best you can. Everybody has opinions. Everybody's is different. Most of the candidates are here that are running for election. It's, it's good to see. We agree with a lot of things you say. But sometimes what sounds like the best solution is not an option. And that won't, that doesn't make any sense sometimes, but there's rules and there's just stuff you can't do because there's agencies on top of agencies on top of agencies that are standing in your way to make improvements or, or do things that you may, may want to do to improve the island. Issues come up. Maybe plans need to be rethought. Maybe budget items need to be moved around. It's, it's just a, it's just a machine. It's just, it's numbers on paper. They can be changed. Life can be changed at any minute. I can promise you that. And a lot of the discussions that we have in here and the debates that we have are just, are just that. That's, that's what you talk about. But at the end of the day, I think we all have the same goal, and that's to take care of this town that we live in. And I've been here a long, long time. And I, I see more positives in this town than, than ever. I can't stop the little old town when I first drove across the bridge in 1982, probably, to what we've amassed or what's happened to it. You wouldn't see a house for blocks, and now they're everywhere. But that grows the economy. But our staff, and we're still lagging behind in so many areas that people are strung out. You, you just don't realize until you see it for yourself. And I think, you know, um, sometimes that, that gets to you and it's just, takes a toll sitting up here, it really does. And don't go home thinking we're throwing your money away because we don't. This stuff has to be done. If there's a place to cut and pull back and retract, we'll find it. And, and we'll make it work. One way or another, this town and its resilience and its people will make it work. And I appreciate all of you coming out and, uh, good luck in the election. And get out and vote and, and vote with your heart.
Doctor?
I just want to reiterate how important it is for all the property owners to get out and vote. It's been, seems like in the past, it's only been a small, small percentage of people that votes. It's not a big election with the presidential or anything like that. But if you're a property owner, you don't want a small population or a small group and what certain opinions of small groups to run the town. You want, you need to, you need to take a, a stand and you need to take your love of this island and you need to be heard. So you need to get out and vote. We don't need to have 77 people vote. We need to have more people get out and vote. Um, I want to mention the festival coming up. It sounds like we're going to have a lot of vendors. Everybody stay safe, um, be patient, be kind of one another when the traffic's bad. Understand our employees are working hard. Come out and have a good time. But I do want to, um, ask Kristy, there is a, uh, event the town is putting on the night before, Barktoberfest. I want her to mention that so we can get that going the night before.
Yeah, on Friday evening, October 27th, we'll have our very first Barktoberfest. Um, if you look at the town's website, we also have a host of other events happening that you may want to check out. But the registration deadline is listed as October 6th. We will extend that to this Friday. Currently, we have at least 30 dogs that plan to attend and a lot of excited people in their emails. So dress your dog up in a costume, come out to support if you just want to view. I do need judges for the costume contest. So if there's any takers that don't have dogs but want to see me about that, I'll be glad to talk to you. And you email me to register.
You know I'm going to stand up for the dogs. They, they don't talk back, so come out and see the dogs. Check out the costumes and, and support the town event. Our staff puts on some great events and we need to get some people out there to witness it. Thank you.
Judge?
I was listening to Brian here. And, uh, what we all know is that the most important things are not things. They're people. And I remember what one of my mentors told me back in the 1950s. He said, "If you can't assume that the other fellow is just as honorable and just as honest as you are, then we are in deep trouble." Now, a little thing that I learned a long time ago that's meant a lot to me. Fame is but a vapor, popularity an accident. Riches may take wings, those who cheer you today will curse you tomorrow. Only one thing endures, and that is character. You're thinking about this office or any other office, and I've been in it over 50 years. And I've made a lot of mistakes. You better be prepared to consider the probabilities. And just because you consider the probabilities doesn't mean the outcome is going to be what you want it to be. And I think about this lift station. You consider, that's something we cannot continue to kick down the road. When you consider the probabilities with every passing storm, we're not afraid of winds and hurricanes, it's the flooding. That below the sea level bunker that's up there, it is absolutely a miracle, in my opinion. You can look back on it and say, well, it, it worked. And it worked, and Scott and Chris and them were up there. I believe one of them told me 28 straight hours, Rick. And the water up in the floorboards of your town's pickup trucks and Tim, you, it doesn't, I don't even have to be as smart as Tim to know what that salt water does to those trucks. 700 houses, 700 houses are directly dependent on that lift station. What an economic disaster. And Brian, I heard you speak on that back in July. And it made an impression on me. And I'm new to this board and I'm still learning. And I'm certain that I'm about the dumbest one who's ever been here. But I think every board since 2015 that's gone on record is doing something about that lift station. Think about what happens- station. Think about what happens, not just to those 700 houses, but the property values up and down from that end to that end. Just think about it. People who have mortgages, some of them who tell me pay as you go, yet they've got a mortgage on that beach house and they're using that mortgage. They're renting the house to help pay for the mortgage without thinking, if I don't have sewer, I don't have a house. I didn't think to take off on the lift too, but it's, it's something we can afford to kick the can down the road on and on. It's always the common good that has to be looked at for all of us, and we're all on the same boat. And if my end gets a hole in it, if I haven't looked after it, then I'll put you in jeopardy too. Yeah, well, I didn't mean to get on my soapbox, but thank you.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Thanks, Judge.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion adjourned?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all for being here.